It is six o'clock and I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, October 16, 2025, meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I have this evening asked Commissioner Clark to lead us in our invitation and this guy down here, Commissioner Duncan, to lead us in the pledge. If you would stand with us, please.
Everyone would bow their heads, please. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful weather you blessed us with, Lord. Lord, we thank you for your grace, your love, for our citizens, for this country, for this nation, for every, for the state of Georgia and our local community. Lord, I just ask your blessings be over this meeting tonight as we handle the people's business. Lord, I just ask you to be with our first responders, protect them, put a hedge of protection around them for the job that they do each and every night and day is so, so much giving for this community. Lord, we thank you for all you do. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord. And we just give you the praise, the honor, and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
[inaudible] Chairman Rofowski is out of town this evening.
He is joining us via Teams, so he will be present for votes. Just wanted to clarify that. Tonight, we have a presentation, a proclamation to the Friends of the Library Week for Glen County. We have a good representation of the Friends of the Library here with us tonight, so we want to thank you for being here. And if you will suffer with me through this, it shouldn't take more than 30 minutes to read it. So, we're, proclamation designation October 19th through 25th of 2025 as Friends of the Library Week in Glen County. Whereas Friends of the Brunswick Glen Library have been part of us, our community, for over 50 years, raising money that enables our library to move from good to great by providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends continually highlights that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and to connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and to advocate to ensure that the library receives the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends generous gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in demonstrating how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that the week of October 19 through 25, 2025, is hereby designated as Friends of the Library Week in Glen County, Georgia, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and to express their gratitude for all they do to make our library and community better for everyone. In witness thereof, I set my hand the 16th day of October, Walter Rofowski, Chairman, Glen County Board of Commissioners. So, if you'll come forward.
[applause]
All right, we're gonna have to keep four and center. So let's go around for half a clock and, and we're gonna restrict you to just 15 minutes.
You said it all.
You can sing, and Napoleon.
Jerry, come on up.
Y'all come out of the front. We want, we want these musical fingers to be front and center.
Right in the middle.
Right here, right here, so the box doesn't block.
All right. And. Tony, how are we doing?
Very good.
All right. So, how long does that smile last? Six more, six more. Not everybody has tears smile.
[laughing]
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I entertain the motion.
Chairman, I'll offer the agenda, excuse me, the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven, which is previously requested by Commissioner Clark to pull for discussion. So that would be, the motion would be to approve the agenda of items two through 14, excepting item seven.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Duncan, a second by Commissioner Tosterson and Sweat, to approve the consent with the exception of item seven. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Chairman?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, let's, let's go ahead and approve the consent agenda for finance and then we'll come back to item seven. Is, is that all right with you, Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for finance unless there is an item that a commissioner would like to pull.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sweat, a second by Commissioner Booker, to approve the consent agenda for finance. Is there any item that a commissioner wants to pull? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
All right, now it's unanimous. All right, let's go back to item seven. And Commissioner Clark, you asked to have this pulled. Would you, you want to expand on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, ever since this has appeared on the agenda, I've had several calls from the Village Drive neighborhood with some concerns and just have wanted some clarification and I'm hoping staff and our county attorney maybe can rest, answer a few questions, concerns that they may have. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Commissioners. Danny Smith, Assistant County Manager. The current budget FY26, we have $125,000 for surveying and $275,000 for funding to do road improvements within German Village. German Village currently has, is mostly consists of unopened right-ofways. Many of those have homes on them and we are, have been experiencing a influx of building permit requests in many parts of German Village. Knowing that we needed to do something to the county-owned right-ofways, improvements to them, we started this process, requested funding during the budget process last year. This $32,000 that we're requesting tonight is just some initial surveying on some of the rights-of-way south of Virginia Drive. That's one of the easier places to start where we don't expect a lot of concern or problems with encroachments in the right-ofway. So we're going to survey that and then move forward with clearing and building a rural road, which is a dirt road, and provide some travelway and drainage primarily, well, one for access to privately owned lots and also to facilitate emergency vehicle access to those current homes, existing homes, and future homes that are in there. We do have intentions of hosting a community meeting in November and we're working on putting that together now to talk about this project and everything we're going to be doing. There will be some additional surveying requests that come forward at a future time, as well as a request to approve a contract to do some of the roadwork. This will be a multi-year project. We will not be able to complete it all in one year with the funding we've received, so we anticipate in future budget years, we'll continue to request funding, hopefully receive funding, and do the improvements to the roadways in German Village.
Thank you. And you mentioned there'll be a community meeting in November?
Yes, sir. We're working to put that together now and get it scheduled.
Okay.
But we are, we do want to get some of the surveying and just, it's just marking out those, the county right-ofways that we own, Glen County owns.
Would it be okay if we possibly deferred this until after that meeting? I know it would hold up some of the surveying, but German Village has been, had some difficulties in the past and understand that their concerns are my concerns. And if, it would be all right if we could defer this to after that community meeting with the folks out there, that would be, and I'd like to submit that in a motion if possible.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification purposes, since Commissioner Clark brought this up. And correct me if I'm wrong, because it's not my district, but there are lots on, in German Village, if I understand this correctly, that are, people pay taxes on.
Yes.
That do not have access to their property because the county has not maintained roads or their roads, access to them that, that the county owns but has not provided access to these lots that these people pay taxes on?
Yes, so the county owns right-ofway. We own the land. The right-ofways have never been opened and have never been opened, cleared, and there's never been a road constructed of any type by the county or anyone else, with the exception of Village Drive and Virginia.
And the purpose of this survey and all that is for them, for the county to provide roads and access to these properties?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, and we have a motion to defer item seven until a future meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Booker.
Discussion, please. Excuse me. I'd like to move ahead with approving the survey work and then leave it for public works to make a decision as to when they pull the trigger to execute the actual surveying, which can be done right after the public meeting. The reason I offer this is surveying in Glen County is a premium now in terms of time. The queuing up to get a crew to show up on the site is sometimes weeks. And if we delay this until a later date in November and then we got to wait longer for a survey crew to actually show up on the site, that's just going to push us further out. The intent of the work is to open the right-ofways, to improve the right-ofway so existing owners can access their property easier instead of going down a pick path. And the other thing is for emergency vehicles can get in and out of those areas when they need to, expeditiously, to provide that kind of service to those residents. So, I offer this as an argument to deferring this most, excuse me, this item. Frankly, I would like to see us approve it and then public works can pull the trigger on it after we have the public meeting, but we wouldn't have to bring it back to the board.
Do you have a date in mind that you want to defer this to?
Anytime after they meet with the residents out there in German Village and discuss their questions, and they've got quite a few, you know, the recent past of land issues out there. We know that there's questions about, you know, what's physically there versus what is on the flat. And so, you know, they've had some concerns and they've brought them to me today and I think, you know, and I can appreciate Mr. Duncan's wanting to move forward with this, but I believe those citizens out there, and there's quite a few, would, you know, need the answers and it won't delay it more than probably a couple of months at the most and we could get started at that point. But let's give the residents their questions and concerns because there's private roads over there versus non-private roads. There's a lot of questions and I think we owe it to the citizens over there.
And I understand what you're saying and that is why we want to do the survey, is to know exactly what is county and what is not.
Would that be a meeting that the county would, would, would hold?
Yes, sir. We're going to host the meeting and advertise and hold a public meeting like we would over a project or anything else.
I would think the sooner we could hold that meeting, the better. Go ahead and set a date for it.
Has there been a date or location?
I have, I'm working with staff to set up an early November meeting. It will be at, more than likely, at the casino.
All right, we have a motion and a proper second.
Could I just add what Danny brought up last? And so Danny, just, just a question. So when you have the public meeting, do you anticipate questions that you won't be able to answer without having the information from the survey on what's public and what's private?
Not necessarily. The survey will, will add clarity to what is public and private, but we can still talk about in concept what, what's there and what we intend to do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, and the motion on the floor is to defer item number seven to a future date. Are you ready to vote? All in favor of defer?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to weigh, I'd like to weigh in on this because I've been in the German Village debacle since 2018. Commissioner Clark, I, I agree that the residents need to know exactly what's going to happen, but for years, the commission has just kicked the can on developing this area. And I, I don't mean develop it as to just put a bunch of small houses in, but the lots are there and, and they've been taxed since 1920-something, probably, or whatever the year was. I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Duncan that we need to go ahead and just figure out where we are because we may, there may be a road that gets lost in, in the shuffle. And I know nobody's looking forward to that, but, but it's something we've got to, we've got to fix this. And I think, I think I know most of the neighbors and, and they're probably like everybody else. They really don't want a lot of development, but it's coming. So, I, I, I understand what those after, but I, I think we need to go ahead and just get the survey done. That doesn't mean we're cutting roads, but then, then we'll know what we have and what we don't have when we have that public meeting. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Chairman.
Can I provide additional comments?
Sure.
This survey, I, I want to be clear. This is an initial survey of part of German Village. I anticipate additional survey work. So even if we were, have the survey, what we talked, the scope we're asking for tonight completed, it's not going to give us the entire picture of German Village. This is primarily the area south of Village Drive. We will be coming back to look at some of the north. And I can, if we want to defer it and come back with a broader scope to look at everything, we can do that. One of the other concerns that we have with the additional houses being built and proposed to be built, we already have some right-ofway encroachments in there, significant right-ofway encroachments that we, based on what we think are county right-ofway and not. So as more and more construction occurs, the potential for right-ofway encroachment to occur is higher. That's another reason why we want to start this moving forward. I, I know in one area, there is a concrete driveway within a county right-ofway. We think in one area, there may even be a home within a county right-ofway. So whether we defer, whether we move forward now or defer for a month or two, this is something we need to do to ensure that when we get five years down the road from now, we don't have, have bigger issues and bigger concerns. But I, I will say, waiting a month or so is not gonna, it's not gonna make a huge difference. I would like to get started, sooner the better, but if we have to defer, that's fine.
All right, so again, the motion on the floor is to defer item seven to a date uncertain. Those in favor of the deferring, raise your right hand. And those opposed? And Commissioner, Chairman?
I'm opposed.
All right, so it's four, three, to deny the deferral. So we come back to then present it for approval. So on item seven, I need a motion to approve item seven.
Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve item seven to advance an agreement and authorize issuance of the purchase order to shoot surveying company for land surveying services for German Village.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a, have a motion by Commissioner Duncan, a second by Commissioner Sweat, a third by Chairman. And to proceed with that, Commissioner Duncan, would you be agreeable to a caveat that says the work won't go forward until the meeting with the village people? That's, that's a bad use of words and I apologize.
I frankly don't think we need to put that in the form of a motion. We've had that discussion and I think we can leave that at the discretion of, of our county staff to execute that appropriately, considering the concerns that some residents may have.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve item seven as presented. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and Commissioner, Chairman?
Yes.
All right, so that is now unanimous. Thank you. We move to item number 25, considering appointing a member to the board of the Board of Commissioners to serve as the chairman's designate on the new Joint Tourism Product Development Steering Committee for a term to run concurrent with the tenure of the appointing chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would like to put Commissioner Sweat in that position, please.
All right, sir. The chairman recommends as his appointment, Commissioner Sweat. Do we need a second on that? All right, it needs no second. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Raise it higher.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
And Chairman makes that unanimous?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number 26, consider appointing a member to the Board of Commissioners to fill the at-large county seat on the Joint Tourism Product Development Steering Committee for a three-year term beginning upon appointment and expiring December 31, 2028. Mr. Chairman, you want to address that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean Vice Chair, I'm sorry. I guess we can be dual chairs. I would say Commissioner Duncan for that seat unless somebody else is opposed.
All right, the suggestion.
And then that, that is the at-large, that is the at-large, correct?
That is the at-large seat. That's correct. And.
Okay.
So, there's a.
Unless someone else, unless someone else wants to appoint someone different, that, that, that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I guess the proper, is there anybody else that, that we want to bring forward?
I would be interested in this, but I, I mean, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to Commissioner Duncan, so.
All right, so, Mr. Attorney, we vote one at a time? All right, so those in favor of appointing Commissioner Duncan to this three-year seat expiring December 31, 2028, we don't need a second on that, correct? So the, the appointment of Commissioner Duncan for the seat that would expire December 31, 2028, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And Chairman?
Yes.
All right, that is six, four, one abstain.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Item number 27, under general business, consider approving the 2025 Glen County General Employee Pay Plan and Personnel Policy Amendment. And our chief financial officer, Ms. Kamara Muntzen, we will give you the floor.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. I am going to go over a few things tonight on the, the classification and compensation plan. As you know, we had a special work session on this on Monday, October 6th, and we went over in detail the, the details of this plan. So I'm going to hit some of the highlights, but feel free to ask me questions. I'm not going to go through this in a lot of detail tonight.
And, and to clarify, Ms. Muntzen, you have gone over that in detail at our work session, just so the general public did.
Correct, yeah.
Did not hear our work session.
So this is just a refresher for anyone, anyone that wants to hear more details can go watch the video of the October 6th work session. So tonight, we're going to go over the proposed classification and compensation plan as well as related policy changes that are coming forward for approval this evening. As with everything that we do, we work to ensure that, you know, what we're doing is aligning with our.
2028, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And Chairman?
Yes.
All right. That is six, four, one abstain. All right. Thank you. Item number 27, under general business, consider approving the 2025 Glen County General Employee Pay Plan and Personnel Policy Amendment. And our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Tamara Munson, we will give you the floor.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I am going to go over a few things tonight on the, the classification and compensation plan. As you know, we had a special work session on this on Monday, October 6th, and we went over in detail the, the details of this plan. So I'm going to hit some of the highlights, but feel free to ask me questions. I'm not going to go through this in a lot of detail tonight.
And to clarify, Ms. Munson, you have gone over that in detail at our work session, just so the general public did...
Correct. Yeah. So this is just a refresher for anyone, anyone that wants to hear more details can go watch the video of the October 6th work session. So tonight, we're going to go over the proposed classification and compensation plan as well as related policy changes that are coming forward for approval this evening. As with everything that we do, we work to ensure that, you know, what we're doing is aligning with our organizational goals of cultivating a culture of service excellence, developing a connected community, and promoting and ensuring a safe Glen County, and that this aligns with our organizational values. So this was part of one of the initiatives in our strategic plan. This is a brief history of our pay, of our pay plan history. So in 2011, 2012 was the last time we did a full-scale pay and compensation plan review. So in 2022, after about 10 years, we brought in Scott Johnson and they looked at countywide all of the positions and did a market study. At that time, Scott recommended that we adopt a policy to review our pay plan every three years because we had gone for 10 years without any pay plan adjustments. So we were way, way, way behind the market at that time. So this year's study is that third year of reviewing our pay plan. In 2022, we did a, and that was with Scott Johnson's study, we did a review of all the roles. Ninety-seven percent of the funds in that plan went to employees below the director level. Fifty-eight percent of those funds went to public safety employees. We did create some compression issues with that plan because we had so many people that were making, like in the $10, $11, and $12 an hour range. When we brought them up to the $16, $17, $18 an hour range, they began bumping up on those folks that were higher than them. So in '24, we did a, we did complete revamps of our public safety pay plans, 100% of the funds going to frontline public safety employees. We created step and grade plans, and no directors were included in those, in those plans. So we adjusted our pay for police officers, sheriff's deputies, fire and EMS personnel, and 911 officers in 2024. So in this review that we're doing in fiscal year 2026, it's, we're still in 2025, but we're in fiscal year 2026, we have done a full-scale review of all the general classifications. So we call this non-public safety, but it's, there are some public safety folks that are included in this study, such as our detention officers, because they were not included in the last study. And so we looked at classifications, job descriptions, and job titles, and we had a complete revamp of our pay, pay plan and matrix. So we went from a mid-max plan to a step and grade plan, which allows employees to move up a little over the years at specific intervals. So the 2026 proposed, we see average increases for pay grades nine through 12 are at 5.71%. And these are just averages. Some will receive less, some will receive more. Pay grades nine through 20, which are considered non-management grades, are seeing 5.12. And then our pay grades 21 through 24, our managers, are seeing 4.39%. We had 583 positions that were reviewed, and our consultants interviewed right at 50% of those on telephone calls to get good details about what their jobs did. All of that information was put into what's called a factor evaluation system. This is a nationwide system that's recognized, that's used throughout both public and private sector to classify employees in a specific grade. So what that means when we say classify, it means when you say, okay, this, this is your job title, these are all of your duties, these are your responsibilities, and based on that, there's a lot of criteria that's put into a system. It's, it's very objective, it's very numbers-based, and a grade is spit out of that system. Our old quote-unquote plan that we had was very subjective. It was like, well, I think this one looks like it fits here, and, you know, there wasn't really any data behind the numbers. So we feel very confident with the way that this was done, that we have good data behind the numbers and we have people classified where they need to be. We went from 50 pay grades to 20 pay grades, which is going to very much simplify the process. And it also compresses the scale a little bit because if you have, you know, between a grade 10 and a grade 11, you're going to have a certain percentage of increase between those grades. So when you have 50 grades, you have a lot more to go. Compressing it down to 20, it gives us more flexibility within the grades, but it doesn't bring us out so much that we have these, these huge gaps between, you know, going up by two or three percent between each grade. Then the, the next part of the study was a peer review, 17 peer organizations. This was counties primarily that were reviewed, mostly in Georgia. We had two in Florida and one in South Carolina that were included in that study. And the results of those studies showed that the Glen County pay plan was 14% behind the average market pay rates. So not 14% behind the top, just 14% behind the average market pay rates for our employees. So one of the issues that we've really struggled with over the last several years is recruitment. We've had several positions that have been very difficult to fill. These are specialized roles like veterinarians, engineers, construction inspectors. We've been trying to hire a veterinarian for over four years, and no one has accepted the salary that the position was graded at. Same thing with engineers. We've had openings for months and months at a time. We've made multiple offers, and the engineers that we're interviewing are expecting at least 50% more than, than what our entry rate salaries are. So, you know, we have some, some areas that we really have been struggling in, and as y'all know, we're very focused on projects and completing projects, so we've got to have some, some engineers that, to help us get through these. So the other thing that has played into this, I think, with, with our recruitment, is that used to, people would always say, oh, well, governments offer great benefits, so go to the, you know, go work for the government. Yeah, you might get paid a little less, but you're going to get great benefits. We no longer offer a pension plan like we used to. So we now offer a, what's called a defined contribution plan, which is basically like a 401K. If you, you know, you contribute, we'll give you a match for your contribution, but we no longer have a pension plan that you can leave and take and retire with and get a specific income for the rest of your life. So benefits in government sector, and this is, you know, really nationwide, pension plans are very expensive, so a lot of governments are doing away with them. But we've also lost that ability to attract and retain people with those pension plans. All right. This is just a slide overview of what I mentioned earlier about the percentages in the different grades. Total cost of implementation of this project is approximately 2.75 million. This is the, right at the same amount that we spent on the public safety pay plans in 2024. So about half of our staff is public safety, about half of our staff is, is general classification. So with this change, we will move from 14% behind the market to 5% above average. So what that means is we're not moving to the top of the, we're still not at the top. We're going to be right at the middle, slightly over that 5% above the middle and the average of those groups that were surveyed, those 17 groups that were, that were surveyed. And another note on those surveys, we did choose counties that were similar in size, geographic location, challenges. We did not go to, you know, Atlanta and, and pick the, the most wealthy counties in the, in the state to, to look at. We looked at, you know, counties that were similar to, to what we have here in Glen County. All right. So that is the end pretty much of the pay and classification overview. I'm going to pause here if anyone has questions, and then I'm going to talk for just a couple minutes about the personnel policy highlights that, that go along with this pay plan that are coming forward for approval this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Commissioner, any comments on the pay plan?
Comment I have, I'm very comfortable with the process that has been utilized to get us to this point. It's, it's something I'm familiar with, having been in different corporate environments before, so I say kudos to staff for getting this developed and moving it to this point for us to consider approval of tonight. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Munson, you want to...
Thank you for the hard work that you put into this, and I know that it's going to be beneficial to the county.
And I would like to thank especially Dwayne Pollock and the HR staff. They have worked tirelessly on this. It is a lot of work to get through one of these and to get new job descriptions for everyone. So thank you to HR and Mr. Pollock for your work in this. Also, thank you to our department heads and our staff who took the time to fill out these forms in detail, interview with our consultants, and really work to make sure that we had the right job descriptions, the right titles, and that things were doing. So it's, it's been a long process, and we're appreciative of everyone's work in this.
All right. So let's look at the personnel aspect here.
All right. So personnel policy highlights, most of the policy changes that we are presenting this evening in your packets are related to aligning with the new pay and classification plan. So we're moving from a mid, a men-mid-max plan to a step and grade plan. So we revised all the language throughout our, our compensation sections to align this plan with, with that new plan, or our policy with the new plan. We have added a extra employee benefit of employees being able to donate their medical catastrophic leave to a peer or coworker in need. So what this is, is, you know, we, we max out at a, at a certain number of PTO hours. And so after you are maxed out, that money, those hours roll into a catastrophic leave bank, and that is held, that can only be used for catastrophic events. So we have, you know, some employees with some pretty hefty balances in their catastrophic leave, and they would like to be able to assist or help a coworker that's, that's going through a cancer treatment, some kind of major surgery or what have you that's already exhausted all of their PTO and catastrophic leave. So we've added a policy for that, and we made some updates throughout. One of the items that we changed was professional development. We had a limit on how many credit hours that you could take and get reimbursement for from the county for tuition. And we decided that if we have someone who is very gung-ho and they want to finish their degree in two years, and they feel like they can manage their workload and take, you know, a full term of classes at night or online or what have you, that we should not limit that. We should allow them to advance. So we're going to reimburse, reimburse for tuition. Mr. Chair, you have a question? Okay.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'm sorry. I thought I was busy.
Okay. All right. So again, just an overview of some of the policies that were, that were updated. One that I do want to point out is the temporary acting pay increase. There was some confusion on this, but this is when a position is vacant for a certain period of time. So if someone takes a leave of absence, or if the position is vacated, someone, sometimes someone has to fill that role. So in that event, if you, if you are a manager filling the role of your manager, and it's a higher level, you would get a 10% acting pay of your current pay on top while you're acting. It's temporary, it's meant to last less than six months, and then you would go back to your regular salary. If you are not in a management position and you're filling a position as an acting, you would get a 5% temporary increase. But this has nothing to do with the pay plan. This is just a completely separate policy. We made updates to promotions, demotions, lateral transfers. I already talked about the leave program, and then on-call status. This is a new policy that we've added to allow for a small on-call stipend of $10 per day for employees that are required to report physically to a location. So, you know, they're not allowed to go out of town, they're not allowed to, you know, take, partake of something that may make them unable to drive. These employees, we want to give them a little bit of recognition for those sacrifices. So it's a flat fee of $10 a day. If they are called in, then they would get paid at our callback rate, which is time and a half, but if they're not called in, then they would just get that $10 a day stipend. Two other new policies that we've added, the employee referral program. We want to recognize and feel that a good way to recruit good, qualified, hard workers are from referrals from our own good, qualified, hard workers. So we want to recognize that refer, with a referral opportunity. And then another one where we talk about, if you leave the county, or if you decide that you don't want your county shirts anymore, they need to be turned back into us, or, you know, anything with a county logo, we don't want our county shirts ending up at Goodwill. So, you know, we just need those to come back to us so that we can remove the logos before, before they're donated. All right. This is just an overview kind of of the whole picture. So the orange dot is where we are tonight, VOC approval of the pay plan and the related policy updates. We've already gone through those first four stops on the road. Next would be the plan implementation, so there's still a lot of work ahead to make this happen, which we are anticipating that if this passes tonight, that these changes would be implemented on the November 21st paycheck for employees. That will give us right at a month to make all of these changes to the individual accounts. There will be an appeals process 90 days after implementation. If someone doesn't agree with their classification and grading that was provided by the system, they will have the opportunity to submit a case and appeal it to our consultants. And then we will continue to review our pay plan every three years. Going, going forward, it is not going to be this major of a deal. This was a whole revamp of our, of our system, our grades, our matrix, all of that. Going forward, every three years, it will be a market study to look at where are our peers and where are we in relation to those peers. So that is all that I have for this evening, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner, any questions? I would like to state that...
Tamara?
Yes.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Thank you, and Dwayne, for all, all the hard work. I, I know, I know we have, we've been at this for a while. We should have looked at it a little harder when we did public safety, but we didn't really commit the money at that time. I know, I know a lot of the admin stuff are, that, that's the biggest place, and public works, the daily workers, they're affected moreover than the upper end of the staff. So I just want to, I just want to congratulate y'all on this, and, and I think it's past the time that we do it.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add that the commission considers our employees and staff the most important, most valuable asset that Glen County government has, and it, I feel like it's time that we do this and, and show the value that we put on our staff throughout Glen County. So I would entertain a motion then to whether we'll approve the General Employee Pay Plan and Personnel Policy Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve 2020, 2025 Glen County General Employee Plan and Personnel Policy Amendments. and Personnel Policy Amendments.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Clark, a second by Commissioner Booker, to approve the pay plan and personnel policy. Mr. Chairman, are, are you trying to?
No, no, sir. No, sir. My, my internet's starting to cut in and out.
All right. So we'll take a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Chairman?
Yes.
All right. And that is unanimous then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't have anyone sign up for public comment this evening. We do have need for executive session still for the matter of land acquisition.
And personnel.
And personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So do.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sweat.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booker to go into executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Chairman?
Yes.
All right.